Okay, you're recording.
All right, thank you. So it is March 23rd, 6:00 PM. My name is Mayor Julia Johnson and I'm going to call the Cedar Woolley City Council to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will start with roll call. Councilman Owen?
Present.
Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda, items one through seven. Do I have a motion?
I motion to move forward with the consent.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Well, tonight, we have the Executive Director of PUD here, who's going to give a presentation. And George, you do this every year for us and it's always informative. We are looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Great, this is good, okay. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate coming here every year and talking to the local elected officials and letting them know what's going on at the PUD. I do have a presentation, so I know that's probably still getting loaded, or let's wait for Bill?
Actually, just copying that over to my local one here.
Okay.
So maybe two more minutes.
Two minutes. What should we talk about for two minutes? Well, okay. My name's George Sidoo. I've been at the PUD for 10 years. I started as Engineering Manager back in 2011, and I've been General Manager for six years. And I'm accompanied by one of our Commissioners, whom you may recognize. Jermaine has been a Commissioner for us for, what, about a year and a half?
Two years and August.
Two years and August, so. Year and a half. And she's up for election this year.
The waters, we were doing a water testing.
Tasting.
And so far, Judy, Judy won.
Oh, good.
Our little area, but then someone, another judge, they went missing a dozen, and someone else came and fixed you a little bit. So far, Judy reservoir water.
So what's this testing?
This is a test of taste.
Oh, okay. So which water tastes the best?
Yeah, it's a, it's the regional section of the American Water Works Association. So the region is Washington, Oregon, and Idaho. And then that region also breaks down into smaller groups. And so we have a Northwest section that starts, you know, up in Linden and Blaine, and I think it extends all the way down to about Everett. And so everybody in that area, there's a local conference at the end of April. So just before that, they do a taste testing conference of all the water utilities in that area. And the winner then goes to the local conference, which this year is in Tacoma. So somebody will represent the Northwest section, and it sounds like it may be us, which is good. And then it'll compete against all the other local sections from the three states. And then the one agency that wins that contest then goes to the National Conference, which this year is in San Antonio. And so they do, they have professional judges, like this is what they do for a living. And I don't think we have them locally, but they do have them at each of the other conferences, and it's quite the event. They do a lot of tasting throughout the day.
Well, I have to tell you that having relatives from the East Coast and from the Southern states, when they come and drink our water, they talk about how wonderful it is.
Of course it is, yes.
Yeah, so I think we win hands down.
Sounds like we're going to.
Looks like it's up and if you want to get.
Great, okay. Thanks, Bill. Yeah, I'd probably take about 50 minutes, but I wanted to update everybody just what's going on at the PUD. I do try and come every year, but this last year, we've had a lot of interesting things going on. And so I thought it'd be good to update you so that you can speak about the PUD. And then also, if there are questions that you have or that you get from your constituents, I want you to feel free to contact me to get more information. I want this to be a good relationship two ways. The Mayor and I speak regularly, quarterly, and I do that with all the other Mayors as well, just to make sure that there's the open communication, so that when things come up, we're available, I'm available to answer questions, because not everybody understands that there's a PUD that provides the water. It's not the city, so often that comes up. But yeah, I will, I've got a few slides to share with you, so you can go to the next slide. All right. Bill, is it possible to minimize the windows on the right, the screen, just to be able to see more of the slide?
I'm going to. That's what I have, sorry about that. Is that better?
We can work with this. We won't see all the slide, but that's okay. All right, so this is a slide of our capital investment budget, and this is something that we've been working hard on. And it's, this is a slide to show you how much we're investing in our system. In the next 10 years, we have a program to spend $155 million on our capital investments. And that's really big for us as well. And just in the next three years, we have $85 million to spend. So the bars on the left, you can see, you know, average spending for us is about $5 to $10 million on capital projects. And we've got a couple of really big projects, one of, well, both I'll share with you tonight. And we've, we're under some heavy spending times for us. And I'll share with you what those are. So Bill, can we go to the next slide? This is one of our biggest projects that we've ever done. It is a replacement of one of our two transmission lines. We have, up at Judy Reservoir, we've got two transmission lines, one that goes south into Mount Vernon and one that comes north into Cedar Woolley. And we are replacing the line that goes into Mount Vernon. And it's 5.3 miles long, and it's a project that's estimated at $40 million. And if you drive down College Way or up Highway 9 around Big Rock, Clear Lake, you've probably seen a lot of the equipment in there. And we're making progress. It's 36-inch diameter steel pipe, if you've seen it stacked on the side of the road. So that's larger than our existing pipe. Our existing one is 24 inches. But that was installed in 1961, and it's outlived its useful life. This is the perfect time to replace it. We've had breaks on that pipe in the last couple of years, and that's when we were designing this project. So we're getting right on the tail end of the life of that pipeline and putting in a new one. A really interesting part of this project, next slide, Bill. So if you have driven down the east end of College Way, you may have seen some of this pipe strung out in that clearing there up to the north of College Way. And what we're doing with that, if you've seen it, our contractor is welding 1,900 feet of this 36-inch pipe, all in one continuous length. And what's going to happen is they're going to, they are currently drilling a hole, a drill hole underneath Nooka Champs Creek. And so all of that pipe that's sitting on the side of the road is going to be pulled under Nooka Champs Creek in about three weeks' time. And the hole for the 36-inch pipe is going to be 48 inches. So they have to do a couple of different drills in order to get the hole that big. And the final elevation of our pipe will be about 100 feet below the wetlands, below Nooka Champs Creek. We had to get it low enough so that it doesn't impact the creek itself or any of the surrounding wetlands. And the actual wetland that we're trying to cross is only a few hundred feet. But you have to go back quite a ways, because the curvature of a 36-inch steel pipe can only be so round. And so we had to go back, and they do, they drill it at a really shallow angle. And so it's, to get 100 feet deep and to get to the other side, you end up with a 1,900-foot-long drill. And in, like I said, in about three weeks, you're going to see that pipe raised up into the air with four cranes. And they're going to, they're going to basically drag it on rollers from the cranes underneath the, underneath the creek and then out the other side. So it's going to be quite the event. We are trying to provide an invitation for people that want to come and look at it up close. So I sent the Mayor an invitation, I think, yesterday. So if any of you are interested in coming to the project site that day, let me know. We don't have an exact date of when that's going to happen. It's probably going to be at the end of March, early April. It all depends on how well the drill goes and when they can plan to do it. But once the drill is complete, they have to get this pipe in the hole quickly, because they don't want it to collapse. And so it might be one-day notice, at the most maybe two days. But if you are interested in looking at that up close, let me know. We can go to the next slide, Bill?
George, I can actually just send them the invitation I received today.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
This, these are shots of the drill that's happening. And so the picture on the left is on the east side of the wetland. So that's over by the Slavic Church off of Highway 9. And so that's what the drill hole looks like. There's a large casing with a smaller casing inside it. And then the picture on the right shows the drill that goes into that smaller casing. It's really hard to see, you can just, it's like a little rock drill you can see just on the end of that drill rod. And it takes about three weeks to drill that hole to get it to the size that we want. So it's, it's interesting to watch them drill the hole for a little while. It gets boring very quickly. It will be really interesting when they're pulling the pipe back through, because that's something you don't always see, a large pipe like that being pulled, and you know, it's going to have a curvature to it. So it will be really interesting, and we're excited for this. And we're going to try and take advantage of the photo opportunity that it provides. All right, next slide, please. Another neat project that we have underway is our new campus. So our existing building is on Freeway Drive over in Mount Vernon. A lot of you probably drive by it maybe every day. That building, just like our pipeline, is quite old. It's 50 years old. It's needing a lot of maintenance. And so what we are doing is building a new building on that existing site. We own 16 acres. So all the fields behind our building are, we own them. And so the photo on the left shows our existing buildings in blue. And so the one building that we currently occupy is right close to Freeway Drive. The new building is up in the top left in orange, and that's where our new building will be. The schedule for that is that we are hoping to break ground later this year, at the end of the year or early next year, and be done in 2024. So if you know anybody that is interested in taking over our existing building, we've got a lot of office space. It needs some work, obviously, but it may be useful for somebody that needs a big parking lot. It's got a large conference room. And so there should be some use for the existing building for somebody else. But you'll see a lot more construction around our site for the next couple of years. Next slide, Bill. Obviously, we're still living a pandemic. It's toward the end. And so I want to give a little update on how the pandemic has affected the PUD. The biggest impact to us is through the Governor's Moratorium, where they prevented shut-offs for utilities. And so we had to waive late fees and penalties. And then we had, because we weren't able to shut people off, a lot of people accumulated really large balances on their water bills over the years, over the last two years. So you can't quite see the number there, but total late fees and penalties totaled $200,000 for us over the last two years, which, we don't rely on that revenue, but it is income that we use to do operational activities with. So that's just revenue that was lost, and we won't be able to get that back. The outstanding balances currently are at about $220,000. And that's quite significant when you consider that there's some people that haven't paid their water bill for two years, and now they're at the point where the moratorium has been lifted. And so we are now in the process of trying to get people to pay, but the disconnections are back on the table now as well. And so it's been a challenging two months for us, because we're starting that disconnection cycle again. We've tried to give people as much notice as possible, and this is something you may all hear about from your constituents. So that's why I bring it up. We, the moratorium ended October 1st, but we didn't start our disconnections again until just last month. We wanted to continue to message people. We provided letters. We've put it in our newsletter. Anybody with an outstanding balance got a personal phone call from our customer service rep. So we've been trying to reach out and try and help our customers. There are, there is assistance available from community action, so a lot of people have been directed there. But ultimately, there are people that had their water cut off. And we're still working with those people, because it's, water's not anything that you can live without. And so it's important for us to try and get them hooked up again.
May I ask, so I know that we funded some money as well. Has, is that all gone? Has that been used by all the citizens of Cedar Woolley who could use it?
Yes. Thank you for the contribution to the customers that we had, but that, all of that did get used. We did have, so we had contributions from Cedar Woolley. We had some from Mount Vernon as well. And yours got all used completely. The one from Mount Vernon had a deadline on it, because it was part of the ARPA money that was back in 2020, so it had a deadline on it. That didn't all get used. But now it's, a lot of the assistance is targeted towards low-income households, whether it's for rental assistance or other utilities like energy or gas. And so we have used up as much funding as possible. We don't have the ability to waive any balances or anything like that. We don't have our own assistance program either. And so, yeah, there are still customers that need help. And the best thing for them to do is to go to community action and try and get assistance through their programs.
Thank you.
We do offer payment plans for people as well. So before the shut-off even happens, we provided a year and a half or two-year payment plan where people could spread their payments out to make it easier. And we did have about 150 people that took advantage of that. All right, next slide, oh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, sorry about that. Trying to fix your screen, but that's going to work.
So I do have another question for you, because you're talking about the assistance and whatnot. I know I asked this before, but I am wondering, just like PSE, where when you pay your bill, there's a box that you can check where you're paying over and above your bill to assist with those who cannot afford to pay their bill. Does PUD offer that or thinking about offering that?
There is that availability. So if you get a paper bill, there should be something on there that allows you to either round up or write in your own donation. And so that does exist. A lot of people pay online, and so I'm not sure whether our online portal offers that feature. But if you get a paper bill, it does allow for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we're on our next slide. Fire hydrant maintenance. I think this is probably something you have heard about already, and so I thought I would just give you an update. As the owners of the water system, it makes sense for us to own and maintain the fire hydrants as well, not to put that off on cities or fire districts. And so it's our intent to have fire hydrant maintenance agreements with all the cities and fire districts. And we signed one with Mount Vernon a few years ago. And it's my intent to get an agreement signed with the City of Cedar Woolley as well. So our first step in that process is doing a condition assessment of the hydrants that are there. And so that's something that we're doing on our own right now. We are currently through just over half of the hydrants. There's about 430 hydrants in the city. And we're doing an assessment, which is really quick, just to decide whether it will need just the routine maintenance or something more than that. And if it requires something more than that, we're just keeping track of that in our asset management system, and we'll, we'll deal with that later. That'll be something that we come back to you with as far as when we come up with our agreement. We expect to have all of the assessments done in another couple of months, at which point we can bring it back. I'll work with Charlie and the Mayor, and we'll decide how we're going to move forward with the agreement. The, the reason we're doing the assessments is that the hydrants in your city are a little bit older than some of the other cities, like Mount Vernon and Burlington. The average age is from 1996, but there are some old hydrants, and you've probably noticed them in and around town. The oldest one I could find on my spreadsheet was from 1944. It still works, and there's nothing wrong with it. It doesn't need replacing, but it's old. So maintaining that will extend its life, and that's our hope. Not to go around and replace all the hydrants with new ones, but to make sure that the ones that are there can continue operating. And that is our commitment to the agreement, is that Frank won't have to maintain the hydrants. We will maintain them, so that whenever he pulls up to a hydrant, it's our responsibility to make sure it works. And that's, that's what we will do as part of that agreement. So we're working on that, and you'll hear more later this year. Next slide, please. SkagitNet is a partnership between the PUD and the PortisGadget, and we have been working since 2017 to provide a fiber backbone in Skagit County. So I wanted to give you a quick update on this. I'm not sure if you get an update from Sarah Young, who's the Executive Director at the port, but I'll try not to confuse you or butcher her presentations. But that map shows the high-speed fiber backbone that is currently in Skagit County. And we, we put that backbone in and provide wholesale services. So the retail, internet service providers can offer the retail by hooking up to this backbone and providing high speed to customers. That's currently available. If you contact the PortisGadget, they're the ones that sign the agreements with SkagitNet. And so that backbone is available for customers that can sign up with an internet service provider. There are six segments that were done in the lower valley. There's one segment that is, will be put in in a couple of months, upriver. That's going from concrete down to the Sauk Swaddle Tribe. And so once that's in, you basically have a continuous fiber backbone from Anacortes all the way to the Sauk Tribe, which is pretty impressive for our community. So that was a great thing that was done in the last couple of years. A lot of lifting done by the port. A lot of funding has been provided by this. You've probably seen funding coming from the state, State Broadband Office, Curb, and Skagit County through Point 09 Funds also funded a lot of this work as well. So it's going well. There's a, one particular internet service provider called Zipley that is helping to build out the fiber in some upriver communities, Lyman, Hamilton, Concrete and Marble Mount. And they're going to work on that this year as well. So by the, by the end of this year, there should be a lot more availability of high-speed fiber as you get upriver. So, which is good for our community. And now the, the port and SkagitNet is looking at different communities in the lower valley. So Fur Island is going to be built out using that same model. They got $4 million to work on that. So you'll see fiber in areas like Fur Island, in Day Creek. You know, these other little pockets of neighborhoods are going to start getting built out as well. Next slide, please. This will be my last slide. This is a neat project that I wanted to share with you, if you haven't heard about it yet. If you drive through Mount Vernon on Division Street and go up to the top of the hill at the intersection of Division and Digby, we own a large water tank up there, 6.4 million gallons. It was put in in 2018. And there's a small pump station located there, where we pump water from that site up to Eaglemont. And we, our historical operation was that we had to put in a pressure-reducing valve at that location to burn off a lot of the pressure in the pipes in order to pump it again. And we partnered with an innovative company called InPipe, and we are now generating electricity at that location. And it's a small, it's a micro hydro unit. And we've been getting a, a lot of press. I just cut out some headlines from some newspaper articles and online publications. But it's something that we're able to put into the water system. Our water system has a lot of energy just within it because of the flow and the pressure. And we're, something like this allows us to tap into that, generate electricity, and then turn around and use it for our own purposes. So we're able to offset our pumping costs by $12,000 a year at that location, just by putting this in. And we're looking at different locations throughout our system to try and install these as well. There's a way for us to just generate electricity and provide it to nearby customers. So we're working with, we've been approached by local industry, one school district, and also the City of Mount Vernon as well, to be able to use some of the power that's generated from something like this. So it's just a neat project that we're doing. It's innovative. It's something that we want to do. It helps lower pumping costs for us, which saves our customers money on their rates. So I just wanted to share that with you, and that is my last slide. The next one just has my email address and phone number. So I'm happy to take any questions on this, if you have any.
Does anybody have questions? Yes, go ahead. Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question on what the lifespan is for that new pipe going to Mount Vernon?
So the, the current pipe is projected to have a 100-year lifespan. So, and I'll give you a longer answer. The, the one that we currently have in place is a concrete cylinder pipe. And it's got a really thin steel can. So this was built in 1961. It's a really thin steel can, and it's wrapped on the outside with concrete, with wire wraps, and on the inside it has concrete. And that degraded over time. The joints sometimes pulled apart, and it was susceptible to damage from just bedding it on rocks. And so we got leaks in that pipe from, for a variety of different reasons. The new pipe that we're putting in is 5/8 inch wall steel pipe. It's all welded. Every single joint is welded outside and inside, and it's completely coated inside and outside. So we're projecting 100-year life.
That's awesome.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I wrote mine down. I'm wondering if PUD is seeing the impacts of all the residential development, and do you foresee being able to serve all these new residents with your current water system?
Yeah, even with the pandemic, we have been really busy working with developers. There have been a lot of developments. And yes, we do have the capacity to serve all that development. That's what our water rights are for, are for expansion and development. It's obviously hard to get into rural areas to develop. But for anything that's connected to our system, the developers typically pay for the extension of the system into areas that are newly platted or newly developed. And it's something that we, that's part of our business. We do it every day, and we enjoy doing that. And yeah, we have the water rights to serve.
Yes, Councilman Owen?
I've got a question for you. It probably doesn't pertain to this, but why do our water meters keep sinking? Every year, mine's a little bit lower. Then I walk down the street and check the neighbors, and theirs the same way.
That's curious. I'm not sure why it would do that. Is it the meter sinking or the ground raising? I don't know. It could be one to the other.
The ground seems to be level, but the meter keeps sinking, and mine's down about that far now.
That's interesting. It shouldn't do that. We often see meter boxes filling up with dirt from, you know, animals burrowing under there and doing that. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't sink. It's connected to a service line on either side. If, you know, call our office. That's something that we can come out and look at and make sure that there's not going to be an issue. Because we don't want to, we want to make sure there's no leak there, number one. You know, sometimes water can help something settle. But is the meter box staying level with the ground? Is it just the meter sinking?
No, it's, it's down too.
Oh, interesting.
You can take the top off, you know, and, I mean, it's full of, I think the moles do that.
Yeah.
And that's probably what they're doing, is undermining the thing, and it keeps sinking.
At some point, the meter shouldn't. At some point, the meter shouldn't, shouldn't drop the, you know, it should just get held up with the piping. But yeah, call our office. We can come out and take a look at that and see if there's anything we can do. Sometimes you can put a bottom on that to keep animals from coming up underneath.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
Just a quick question. How, how much does Judy Reservoir provide to the, uh, water to the county?
If you, for the entire county? Is that what you're thinking?
Mount Vernon, Cedar Wully.
Yeah, the, the surface area for Judy Reservoir is Cedar Wully, Burlington, Mount Vernon, all the way down into Conway, Pleasant Ridge. We don't go to Anacortes. And it only goes up to about Bull Hill Road to the north. And it stops, you know, at, at about the Upper Skagit Tribe going to the east. So in terms of population, we serve with the Judy system probably about 75,000 people. And so that's quite a bit. It's most, it's the majority of the county's population, right? I think the county population is 125,000, I think with the last sentence? 123, something like that. So yeah, we serve about 75,000 with Judy.
Are there ever security issues up there?
We, knock on wood, no. We have a, a good program in place up there. I don't want to get into a lot of details, but the water treatment plant is manned 24/7. We always have somebody there. And yeah, we've, we've had assessments done and yeah, we, it's secure.
Councilman Lavaca?
Can you tell us a projection of how many disconnects we will see in 2022? But chance we're at least over the next three months, three to six months?
So we have gone through one, one cycle. So we read all of our meters in cycles and it takes about, I think about eight weeks to read all the, the meters throughout the county. And so we've gone through that once. And in reading, you know, 23,000 residential meters, we had, I think, 320 disconnections. That was the first round. And so going through it again, we're hoping that number drops significantly, but we're not sure. You know, we won't know until we do the next read cycle, which starts next week. The original list that we got of potential disconnects was a lot larger than 320. I would say it was probably closer to 2,000 or 2,500. And it was, it just came down to, you know, people waited till the last minute to pay. There was, you know, when we sent a message out that said we're rolling trucks on Monday and your cycle is, and your house is on the disconnect list, that's when the majority of people paid. So we ended up with about 320.
And then one last question. I'm just curious. I know that you spoke to this the last time you were here, but moving water, piping water east of Cedar Wully, what's, what's that looking like? What's the projection there?
Yeah, the, the last time I spoke about rural water, it was, you know, the, the questions come up in Skagit County because there's a well drilling moratorium. You can't, in most areas of the county, you can't just go and drill a well on your property. And so since 2015, we've been working with Department of Ecology and other partners to try and either extend our water lines into rural areas or figure out other water supply solutions. So for us, since we own the water systems, the easiest thing for us is to extend pipelines. That, that is very expensive. And we have identified places where that would work, not necessarily only east of Cedar Wully, but you know, going north, going south. And what we've done is gone to the state for some funding for those projects. So we've, we've developed a priority list of projects that we want to get done. The ones at the top of the list have more bang for the buck. You know, if you put in two miles of pipe, we're trying to pick up as many customers as we can. People that have asked us to come and extend a line, people that are on a well that has bad water quality now. So we've, we collected all that information. The first project we are trying to get funding for is on Little Mountain Road in Mount Vernon. There's a lot of potential development and people that need to get their, get off their well. We have other projects after that that we want to get to, but we haven't been funded yet for the first project. It's unfortunate because there's a great need in getting potable water out into rural areas, but it, this, the legislators just haven't, haven't agreed and, and haven't funded our projects quite yet. So we're, we're still trying. It's, we are unable to fund those projects because we don't, we don't generate tax revenue. We don't, all of our revenue is from rates. And so we can't do expansion projects using our rate revenue. So we're trying to get the state to fund those projects. I've asked the federal government for funding for those projects, haven't been successful. But we won't stop. We'll, we'll keep going back every year and try and get those funded. But not a lot of success to date. Unfortunately.
Well, thank you and thank you for your perseverance.
Yeah.
Thank you Commissioner Corningay for being here and for all that you do on the commission, so, all right.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Okay, moving along, we'll go to staff reports and I'll begin with Chief Tucker.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We've had a couple of questions come up lately about graffiti. I think we've answered most of those questions via email. And there's a comprehensive rework on the ordinance and Lieutenant Mackel race working on a team approach to get some, I guess, some people working on that project once we get some better weather and all that too. So we've got stuff in the works and we're, and we're working toward that. And in that same ordinance, the, excuse me, that same ordinance, it addresses some nuisance properties as well. And I'm sure every one of you that has one of our popular nuisance properties in your, you know, your constituency gets word from those folks. We've got, I think, three or four pretty serious nuisance properties that Code Enforcement Officer Carr has been working on. And she works closely with Nikki on these. There's a whole process that has to go through and there's a lot of dancing that goes around a proper posting and all that stuff. So we are addressing some of those things. And the, the new ordinance that, or the, whatever it's called, that has been drafted up that you'll be seeing in the next, you know, month or so, has some pretty powerful teeth in it to take some, care of some of those properties. It's not a huge change, but it's, it sets out pretty clearly what can and can't be done. These are problems. It's almost like having a cancer in your, you know, a cancer that you aren't removing and it grows. And we've seen that my entire career here. If you allow one of these properties that extends its little fingers into different neighborhoods, or you know, further and further in the neighborhood, it causes more and more problems. We have more and more contacts with suspects there. And next thing you know, it is a problem 24/7 and not just in ISO. So we're working on those. If you have any questions on any of those specific properties, don't hesitate to shoot me an email or send something to the mayor. She could forward it to me and we can give you kind of an update on what we're doing. I'd have to talk to Officer Carr, see where we are in the process. But I know there's at least three pretty hardcore ones that we're looking at that are really a problem and we'd like to get those resolved. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the chief? I just want to say the bust that took place, what, last week, 10 days ago, that was pretty amazing. And I know one of our officers was actually involved in that.
Yep.
And so fantastic that I think the city of Cedar Wully, our police department actually participates in those multi-agency divisions that, that are doing great work out there. So thank you.
It's, it's great to be at the big boys and big girl table playing on that level because we were not seeing some of the things that were passing through Cedar Wully. We had no clue. They're outside of our radar. And now we've got a better handle on that by having somebody on some of these more specialized units that are partnered up with a lot of other agencies. And it's been great. And you know, it's also a social problem as well. I mean, you saw some of the drugs that were on that. If you, if you saw our Facebook post, there was some fentanyl, fentanyl laced pills in there as well. And we've actually seen more overdose type stuff that's most likely related to that. So it starts, you know, it's just good work and good partnerships and attacking problems like that. So we don't want any of these problem properties in town to become one of those.
No, we don't. So thank you. Thank you to you and your team. Chief Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things this evening. You might've seen Cook Road closed yesterday morning for about three hours. Unfortunately, we had a pretty significant house fire out there in the early morning about 5:30 AM. And you know, I was talking to Councilman Owen prior to, a lot of times we get called out and said, you know, there's explosions in these houses. And most of the time it ends up being some aerosol cans and stuff that are popping off. But this was actually a true explosion in a house where the Skagit County Fire Marshal's Office, the, some of the deputies and detectives and the ATF are involved in the investigation. But it's kind of looking like there might've been some propane that got into the under floors and, and blew, actually blew some of the walls right off the foundation in this house. So unfortunately, with Cook Road being a main thoroughfare and our hydrant being right directly across the street, we had to close that down, which kind of reiterates our planning processes and our partnerships with John Coleman and his team and Mark and their team. And we, we're setting up some of these developments and housings as, as we grow and we put more and more hydrants in and infrastructure. This is one of the reasons why we have some of these developers put hydrants on both sides of the street and certain distances as we, we need more and more of that infrastructure to, to meet the demands of some of these busier roads like Township and Cook Road and State Route 20. So this is when it really comes to the forefront and makes the most sense when we lose a thoroughfare like that for three hours. COVID numbers are down. We're 33% down from last week at 33 cases per 100,000, which is another good sign. Unfortunately, we had six new deaths. Hospitalization rates are staying, maintaining the same at 4.6 per 100,000. And with the, the mask mandate coming off, we've been able to enjoy some more in-person trainings. We had an extrication drill Monday night where we got to go down to the training site where Nathan and Kevin and Brent and their crew helped us get that back up and running with some of the, uh, uh, new gravel and stuff down there. We had some families that got to come out and watch us do some of our trainings and see what mom and dad do on Monday nights with us. Unfortunately, we have two more folks that are leaving as of today. Austin Foster got hired with Burlington Fire this morning, so he has two more weeks with us. And Mr. Dylan Whitley will move on to Everson up at North Wacom as a full-time firefighter. It looks like here in the next month or so. So we'll know a little bit later when his true start dates are. And a shout out again to Kevin and David Davidson and, and Nathan and their teams for helping us with the traffic detours with Public Works yesterday morning. As, as always, everybody steps up and takes care of the big family and, and team. And that's what we're all about here, so.
Exactly. Any questions for Chief Wagner? Well, I want to extend on behalf of the city, our thanks to you and your team. You actually do provide a lot of public safety and you're taking good care of us. And I know that you're staffing us down. I did see where you are posting on our website for applications for people to apply. And so I want to put that out there that for anybody who might be interested in either training and fire EMS, or if you already have that but would like to enhance those skills, Cedar Wully is the place to do it. As you're hearing from the chief, we actually train them well and they are picked up, you know, like hotcakes by other agencies. So nice job. Thank you, chief.
And, and with that, Janine on Debbie's team has got us on public safety testing to also post that part-time firefighter positions there so we can kind of look at the whole region. So that's a, a big win. And we're looking for any volunteers in town that even if they don't have those credentials or certifications, will hopefully use some of these ARPA funds that I think are on the agenda later on to run some academies and train some of our folks within and build that bench strength. So thank you.
Excellent. So Finance Director Debbie Burton, hello Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything this evening, but I do want to recognize the finance staff. As you know, I am now interim finance director and really not spending very many hours at city. And I want to acknowledge Serena for really stepping up and taking a great leadership role and really all of our staff, they're doing an amazing job. So please give them your thanks as well when you see them. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. That's very true. Serena's doing an amazing job. But your presence is still felt there. We still feel your direction, so thank you. Public Works Director, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A few things I just want to bring to your attention tonight. I've been talking about the federal RACE grant that's due on April the 14th. I'm working actively on that between the various other things that are going on. I'll be bringing to you on the night of the 13th, a request for your permission to submit the grant and to fund whatever match that we determine would be necessary for that. And Debbie and I will be talking about that to make sure that the funds are available before the meeting. We'll have that in the form of a memo for you. Also, after the last time we met, we got a notice, a call for applications for the Skagit County Economic Development Grants. Those happen on an annual basis. That's the .08 money or whatever you call that, that funds economic development. We were successful last year with a $250,000 grant to support our Township SR9 McGargle-Johnliner Intersection Project, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. So we've used that particular program many times over the last 14 years that I've been here and before, of course. And so we're looking at requesting some funds from them as well to support that same project, the Jones-Johnliner Trail Quarter Project, so we can put together a good, solid match and a good team effort on that. We'll also be bringing to you in the not-too-distant future, some information on a property acquisition. We're looking at doing an advanced acquisition on a property on that corridor. So more on that later on. Construction-wise, the building project down at the wastewater and Public Works Operations Building is, is coming along well. The trusses are all set, the roof is on, and they're waiting for a few dry days in a row to put their membrane on the roof and get it dried in and start to drywall on that. They are drywalling on the laboratory building and coming along well and they're moving, moving right ahead. They're planning to have their civil crew come back and start again about the second week of April. They'll be connecting the power utility up to the buildings and those things like that. So it's, it's moving along well. They're still predicting they'll finish mid-September on that. Our design efforts are focused around the Township SR9 Johnliner Intersection that I just mentioned. We did select Reichart and Ebi and we're negotiating with them now on their consultant agreement. And hopefully you'll see that for your approval on the 13th. Olmsted Park, we have a, a number of minor agreements that are actually under either my or Charlie or the mayor's signature authority that we'll be awarding over the next few weeks to move forward on that, assuming you do approve the ARPA funds tonight. But that will, that will cover the design of the Phase Two structures for that project. We're anticipating we'll design those this year and construct those in 2023. The terms of our RCO grant, they want to see some separation between the follow-on work and the completion of the things that are in their scope of services. And so that's part of the reason for the timing on that. And on Olmsted itself, Pacific Land is Architecture is moving ahead with the final design on that, that development, the RCO-funded project. I expect to get their final plans and have that ready for bids sometime in the next couple of weeks. We are still waiting for environmental clearance on that project. There's been quite a bit of, shall I say, confusion on RCO's part on what their own process is. They've asked us for stuff we've already submitted. They've asked for things that are not actually required. And it has slowed things down a little bit and caused some confusion in the ranks. But we think we've just about got all of that taken care of and hopefully we'll be able to submit the final aquatic projects application to the Corps of Engineers for their approval. Then it'll just be a matter of waiting on them to do the final approval and then we can advertise for bids on that project and hopefully get that one started yet this year. So Memorial Park, same story on that. We, we will have, I think I've already got it in agendas, the agreement with Pacific Land is Architecture to do the final design on that as well. And other than that, our staff is working on, in their spare time, trail road overlay design with the TIB funds and... design with the TIB funds and continuing our design on the Cascade Trail Extension. That's everything from me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Always a lot. And on behalf of the council, extend our thanks to them, too, for the work that they did on the fire day before yesterday. So that's fantastic. Moving on to Charlie Bush, and I want to say Charlie has actually offered some great support down in finance, too, when Debbie's not able to be there. I want to say it's been amazing working with you so far, and I really appreciate you. I really appreciate you, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and thank you, Council as well. And yeah, I second what Debbie says about the finance staff. They've been great to work closely with so far. Really enjoying that experience. A few things on my list. One, Finance Director position on Friday was our first review date, which basically means we start looking at those applications that we've received. We've gotten three so far. We hear we might get a fourth, and we'll start vetting those folks here in the next week or so. And it's open until filled, so if you still know anybody out there, we would certainly welcome more applicants than we have so far. We have also eight positions on our website that are currently listed, so there are plenty of opportunities at the City of Cedar Woolley, so check those out and spread the word on those as well. And there's some more, at least one more coming soon. Classification and compensation study was basically due on, responses to our request for proposals were due on Monday, and we've been going through the process of vetting those. We'll be bringing a recommendation to you that's going to be a contract that's above the signing authority of the mayor or myself. We'll be bringing a recommendation to you on the 6th of April. We're going to ask for action that evening, and that's because we're contractually obligated to do this classification and compensation study with our Ask Me Bargaining Unit, and also we need to get it done in a timely fashion, and it takes several months. It's a key part of putting together the 2324 budget. So I just want to give you a heads-up on that. The council's strategic planning session is scheduled for April 29th, and as we get closer, we're going to have more information and more communication with you about that. Looks like we're going to be doing that at the new library. We're about to talk about the old library, but at the new library, the current library. And we have a consultant onboard to help us facilitate that day, so more details soon. And then the YMCA contract, I'm working on at least with the YMCA that I mentioned at the last meeting for youth services at the old library, and that is getting closer to completion, and we'll be bringing a recommended contract to you, we anticipate, in the next month or so on that. So those are my items for this evening.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to people online. So Director of Building and Planning, John Coleman.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm speaking to you from the future, where it's almost 10 o'clock in New England. So, excuse me, I don't have a lot to talk to you about today, but I did want to mention a few things. The Planning Commission is still reviewing the Central Business District Design Standards. They had another good meeting about it at their last Planning Commission meeting, and they wanted to see a few more additional changes to make it absolutely perfect. So we'll be reviewing it one last time, hopefully in April, and then getting it to you shortly after that. If you remember, at our last council, the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting, we spoke about parking standards in the UVMU. That is also something that the Planning Commission finished their workup on, not this month, but previous. And I've been working on getting all that documentation ready for the council to review, and I was unable to get it to you for tonight's meeting. I apologize, but that'll be coming your way, and there'll be lots of information for you to review, and we'll be able to answer any questions you might have about that at that time. Aside from that, we're still waiting, we're still looking for applications for our permit tech position. Michelle retired, as I said, last week, a couple weeks ago, and we've posted that job, and it's been up for about a week and a half now. And so that job is still open. And I think that's all I have to present to the council tonight. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, John. City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So Chief Tucker already mentioned a number of things that are on my plate. We have several ordinances coming your way. I think on the April 13th meeting, First Read, our office has been working on several code enforcement issues, as the chief mentioned. So we're staying incredibly busy beyond that. I don't think I have anything of interest to the council.
Okay. Any questions for Nikki? Okay. And Bill Chambers, Director of IT. Good evening, Bill.
Really, working on updates to IT policies still, and working on updating network devices for, just to make sure that all of our security is tightened up with all the stuff that's going on in the world right now. Also, updating our global policies. Pushed out all of the users and computers in our domain for a little more control there. Had our quarterly meeting of the Technology Advisory Group today, and that went well, and some great feedback from folks on current projects and some new projects in the works. Also, preparing for our Senior Leadership Team Workshop tomorrow at the library, the new library, and preparing an article for the next issue of a CC magazine. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Bill? Moving on to council reports, Councilman Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I want to apologize to Mark for getting my wires and time crossed up. I promise it'll never happen again. And there's Jermaine. Hi, Jermaine. It's good to see you, and we spend a lot of time sharing this chair, rubbing shoulders and arguing and disagreeing with each other, but we miss you, and it's just good to see you. And I will stop in. I know where your salon is now, so I'll stop in and say hi. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman McLaughlin.
Hi, thank you. I have no report this evening.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. I don't have anything technically new to report, continuing to receive people that seem to be unhappy with the developments and the amount of growth that's happening. More this week, receiving comments and concerns about whether or not police and fire will be able to adequately respond in time with the infrastructure in place with Cook Road and Highway 20 and the backups and all, you know, the extent of time that that could take for them to respond with all of this going on. So again, just doing my due diligence and passing that along. Other than that, just a reminder that the Lager Rodeo will be happening this year and all of the events along with it, as well as the Cedar Woolley Little League Softball State Tournament is intended to be held here. And so everybody's looking forward to having some sort of normalcy this summer and moving forward with some positivity.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns.
To piggyback off Councilmember Diamond, the log drive is going to be brought back this year as well. The Lions Club is going to be bringing that back, so look for information about that coming out soon. I wanted to thank Nikki Thompson and Chief Tucker and his department for working on those ordinances. I appreciate it. I have had a fair number of complaints about houses, such as what you're talking about and the graffiti that we've seen. Ironically, the same day, actually, I had somebody complain we weren't approving enough housing projects, as well as we're approving too many from someone else. So it's interesting discussions, but thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestee.
I have nothing for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to, I don't have anything to say, other than I would like to be excused from the April 13th meeting, unless I have Wi-Fi that I can come on. So I would love if a motion was made.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion excuse.
I'll second that. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you.
Have a good time. Enjoy the sun while we're building our ark here. And then Councilman Lavaca, good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we were scheduled to have a Parks and Recreation meeting, committee meeting, last week, but we decided to move that up to, because of unforeseen circumstances, move it into May, so we'll contain that into May. I know it puts us more towards summer, when the idea is to have something kind of set or ideas ready for the council for summer, because that's when a lot of the activities take place. I think moving forward with like the Little League, figuring out how we can bring downtown and the community over to the ballfields by either having booths or the opportunity to do booths or things like that, could be a great discussion for us to have and see how we can get those together. I do appreciate everybody for giving that time. I have, I know that we have the traffic along the edge of the Cook and 20 Road, and so I still kind of get back on that, too, from people. When I travel, of course, to work and back to town, I hear from other people about need for doing that artillery route, Artura route. So I'm looking forward to seeing if we do have motion with that, and I know it's all in legislative hands on those guys. So it is an interesting time we're in, for sure. So I do appreciate that, and I look forward to doing a lot more with the Parks and Recreation coming up. We got a lot of things, the fair, the Lager Rodeo, a lot of games, Teen Center sounds very cool, trying to do the skate park, various other things. So appreciate that.
Excellent. Yeah, so that meeting will be May 11th. Yeah, so I also want to mention, yes, absolutely Lager Rodeo's back on, so as blast from the past, and coming up soon is Woodfest, Timber to Tech. That's always a lot of fun, and it's always, I don't know, there's just some brilliant people out there who can really carve some amazing things. And also this Saturday, the Skagit Trail Builders is going to be doing, working on one of their projects, and you can go to their website if you're interested in volunteering there. So other than that, I am going to move on, given the hour, so we will move on to public comment. Right now, it is 7:03. Is there anyone here or online who would like to participate in public comment? If so, please give your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes.
Hi. I figured since I'm here. I'm Jermaine Cornigay, 123 North Central Street here in Cedar Woolley, and I just wanted to give kudos and shout-outs to our Public Works Department. I've had lots of issues with, pretty ironic, water issues at my house. Even today, I had a PUD pipe decide in front of my house only to go out, but I've had water issues from neighboring properties, I think, and just a lot of issues with drainage. And I just wanted to thank Mark and Wally and the whole department for being on that and really stepping up right away.
Excellent.
So I have to say, and nice to see you guys, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jermaine. Anyone else? Seeing no hands raised online and no one coming up to the podium, it is now 7:04, and I will close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. And the first thing on the list is our Second Read for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, the allocation. Debbie, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, we discussed this at our last council meeting. There's been no updates to the plan as presented. I didn't receive any feedback regarding that. So as you've heard from many of our reports, we're all very excited for this to get approved so that we can move forward with the exciting stuff that is included in this plan. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but looking forward to your motion this evening.
So are there any questions for Debbie? Councilwoman Lavaca.
Debbie, is there, it looked like there was a fund set aside for like a rainy day fund in that, which was about half the amount. Is that correct?
It's not really for a rainy day fund, it's for future government services. So right now, today, we don't have any purpose for those funds. We will have to make a decision on what we're going to use those funds by 2024. We have to have them committed, we have to have them spent by 2026. So it's for future government services, so, but yes, if we were to have an economic downturn in the next couple, you know, years, we could definitely use those funds for that.
Nice. I also didn't happen to catch in there, was there any, and it might be a question for Nikki, if there's any appropriation, in order to get the appropriation, any strings attached, anything like that, that would require us for such, or if it's just a straight across?
It's, we're called an NEU, which means that we received these funds, there's no, the strings attached are that, you know, we can use them for government services, those are the strings attached. So, but no, there's no other strings attached. There's no match required, no anything. We've also, we've already received half of them. We'll be receiving the other half in June, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions? Councilman McLaughlin.
I spoke with Charlie about this a little bit. I just wanted to bring it back on this meeting to discuss and see if it's something the council would be interested in. I feel that since these are funds for the COVID pandemic that we went through, the people that have been responding to these calls, they've been going into people's houses, taking care of them. They've had a lot of increased exposure to the virus. I feel that since they've had a larger risk, that we should have a forward-looking payment as a, I don't know what the right term would be to call it, but I feel that, you know, they have gone above and beyond what we ask of them in their normal job duties, and they have done an excellent job taking care of our community. I think that we should consider using some of these funds as a one-time, you know, 2022 increased-risk payment to our officers, to our EMS and fire. Is that something anyone else is interested in?
I like that.
I do, too. Have we, did, I know that we haven't, because the fire department's not really part of the city, and like we said, we haven't lost anybody due to the mandates that came through. But if there was people that did get, have to be let go or decided to leave early because that, would they still be eligible for that? Because they took great risk the two years previous.
Unfortunately, because of the state of Washington laws, that is not something that they would be eligible for. So whenever, if the council decides to discuss a potential resolution for future, all government workers are considered essential workers, so everybody was really impacted by this, and so all government workers are eligible for something proactively, as I think Councilmember McLaughlin was referring to. We cannot look back, but the council can set whatever parameters they want around that, you know, full-time, how many hours a person works. You can say it for a certain amount of period, for the next month or whatever, things like that. So there are a lot of ways to provide that type of pay to folks that have had to deal with COVID-19 issue. So, yes, if that's something, the consensus of council, we'd be happy to bring that discussion back.
That's really well-stated. I agree with that. We were here during the pandemic. We saw how hard even those who maybe weren't out there in the field, how hard they had to work. Everybody experienced undue stress and a lot more work due to COVID. So, yeah, I think, I appreciate you sharing that, Debbie. Councilman Allen, did you have a question?
This is directed, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Brendan. I honestly think, doctor contrary here, I don't, everyone in this country suffered for two years with the pandemic. Some people had a job, they had additional risks, but they had a job. And I just can't see dedicating money for the City of Cedar Woolley to a select few people. That, you know, we all have opinions, but we all suffered equally. The first responders suffered maybe a little more, but they got to go to work every day and get a paycheck. So anyway, that's my two best words.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
I wonder if it would be a good idea to have a fund set aside for maybe a city event, a city-wide event for all the people, all the constituents, and especially for the officers and the firefighters, and especially in plainclothes, and just us host it as a thank you to the community and the people that were a citywide event for all the people, all the constituents, and especially for the officers and the firefighters, and especially in plainclothes, and just us host it as a thank you to the community and the people that were involved. Because you're absolutely right, people in their workplaces, going to work, so many essential businesses stayed open, so many unessential people were forced to stay home. I mean, there is a lot that that happened, and maybe it can just be something that we can do that as a city, possibly.
All right. Well put. Anybody else? So does anybody want to make a motion? Is this something that you want to have further discussion on? What's council's pleasure here?
Mayor, if I could weigh in?
Yes, Nikki, yes.
If there's going to be a motion, it would be a good idea to have some sort of motion to have staff bring forward a policy, because you would want to adopt a policy prior to identifying how, or a policy that discusses how the funds are to be allocated. We wouldn't just want to, I think, make a motion. You'd want a formal policy.
Correct, and I appreciate that. I would like a motion on the plan as presented this evening. As you know, there is, money's in there for future government services, and then we could, if I get consensus from council that you want to, want us to work on a resolution policy for that, I'm happy to bring that back at a later date.
Thank you, Nikki. Anyone?
Thank you, and I appreciate the clarification on that, and I agree that all employees suffered through that, too, and thank you, guys. I would like to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan as stated.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin and seconded by Councilman Owen to bring forth a policy? No, or just?
This is to approve the.
Just to approve?
The allocation plan this evening.
Okay.
So what was in the packet, and then do you look into the policy?
Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Is this for the American?
Yes.
Yeah, this for how?
Thank you.
Yes, we're still there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. All right, excellent. All right, thank you, Debbie, for doing that.
You bet, and I think I have consensus to bring back a resolution for discussion for policy. So thank you.
And thank you, Nikki. So we're still looking for a action, or did we just do that? No, so we're still looking for an action, a motion to approve the American?
We're done.
We're done, okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, my bad, sorry. Okay. Owens. Okay. Moving on to new business, and this is the proposed 2021 Comprehensive Plan Docket amendments. And Mr. Coleman, you're on.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, so this is the 2021 Comprehensive Plan update cycle. This is actually fairly easy. I know there's 100 pages or so here, but there were two rezones on the 2021 docket. The Planning Commission reviewed both of them, and the procedural history is in the documentation, particularly the findings of fact, the planning commission findings of fact, conclusion, and recommendation, along with all the background documentation received from the public comment periods. The first rezone was for the Ruby rezone. It's three acres out at the golf course. And the Planning Commission, after studying it both this year and in 2020, made a recommendation to deny that rezone request. The second rezone request was from Bucko for about 5.2 acres of land, roughly off of Cook Road, behind, behind the first row of properties. It's currently zoned mixed commercial. They requested to change it to residential 15, which is more or less our apartment zoning. It allows for 15 units per acre. So that's basically apartments would be the highest used of that kind of zone. And I apologize if there's people talking behind me, I'm in the lobby of a hotel. I can't control the people around me speaking. So the Planning Commission also reviewed the Bucko rezone request and also recommended denial. So after you've had a chance to to look at all the materials, we'll be asking for the City Council to make and make a determination. There are four potential actions, there's probably more than that, but the four potential motions that the City Council can make are just to, one would be to deny both rezones as recommended by the Planning Commission, and that's, that would be the first motion described in, and I'm not asking for any motions tonight, I'm just laying out the the potential actions that the City Council can take when they're ready to take, to make an action. Second option would be to approve one of the rezones, but not the other. And the other, and then of course, the, there's the potential to approve both of them. If the council wanted to approve one or both, or one or both of the rezone requests, which is not what the Planning Commission had recommended, then the council would need to find additional, create additional findings stating why they wanted to do what they've done after the Planning Commission had recommended to deny. So there's a lot of history and a lot of information about these two rezones. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. But most of the information's in the packet, and I think we've discussed these a little bit in the past. But I'll leave it at that. We'll be looking for a motion at the next council meeting. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John, is there a particular reason why we would have to wait until the next meeting to do that, or could we make a motion now?
Let me, let me check the timing. The only thing, there's just one timing issue that I'm waiting for a CEPA deadline to, and so I want to make sure that, I think we've cleared that time, but I want to, I want to be absolutely sure. So I'm looking through my packet right now. CEPA determination on significance was issued February 22. So yeah, we're, we're past that. So there is no reason why the council could not act today, just as a general practice, staff does not ask for action on the first read.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Turn that back on. I was wondering, because I'm looking at both plots, and I read through the documentation, and there's a lot of information there, which is really well done, by the way. You guys did a great job. One of them is over there with the Ruby on the Fruitdale, Ruby rezone of that three acres. I did see the pictures, and I have heard about the water runoff there, and I didn't see a great engineering plan, but it seems like the location, right next to a park, as you guys, as I've heard numerous times about the need for housing versus, you know, in the other locations we've seen it proposed, it's kind of off to the edge. And I do understand that that's commercial area, or it's zoned right now, multi-commercial. But it does, it just seems like that would be, you know, toward the edge of a park, or toward the edge of a park for housing already nearby, according to the map. And same thing with the Bucko, in a way, it's behind a number of houses, so I just, I'm having a hard time visualizing the type of commercial businesses we would see back there when we've already approved it versus bringing that, that, you know, infrastructure into town more, or where it's been proposed in other places. Are those, is the intent that one day somebody will build shopping centers there, or something like that?
So in the case of the Ruby rezone, that property is zoned mixed commercial, it's about three acres. That was considered, that was put there as like a small retail area to serve the housing developments that have popped up there. You know, Soft Mountain View Estates is right there, and there's about 250 or so homes over there. And then, of course, also it could serve the Swift Center. So that was, that was put in place to potentially serve as a small-scale retail, commercial node for the residential and Swift Center area. Now, staff didn't recommend changing zoning on either of these, because we have a balance of, of commercial land and residential land. So we don't, we don't want to give up any commercial land, you know, land that would be used for generating jobs, without a plan for putting, for creating more residential, or more commercial land somewhere in the city. So neither of these projects propose adding any additional commercial land anywhere else, which means we're just not going to be able to have land to accommodate future commercial growth, whether it be retail in a case like this. The Bucko property is a larger five acres, and after the new trail road extension, North Trail Road extension goes through, which is an arterial road, that property will be accessible by an arterial. So it could, it could also be small-scale commercial on that land, or it also could be used behind the commercial land, along Cook Road for light manufacturing, which is, you know, non-noise generating manufacturing kind of place, nothing that would be industrial, but, you know, something smaller scale and less noisy. Again, we don't want to eliminate any commercial land without a plan for providing new commercial land. Otherwise, we're giving up our opportunity to provide job creation in the city of Cedar Woolley. And that's really important, to have places for people to work here. We don't want to become a resident, we don't want to be a fully residential community. You know, that's how you end up being a bedroom community, and then you, your tax base that is generated by commercial lands is lost. So it's important that we keep that commercial land. Also, you know, we, we have a balance of residential land, and we haven't, we haven't seen a need to increase the amount of residential land in the city, because we still have enough residential land to accommodate our projected population growth. So that's why we're not encouraged, that's why staff and, why staff didn't recommend approval of these rezones, and that played it largely into the Planning Commission's decision, too, along with the other reasons listed in the findings of fact.
Thank you very much, Sean. I was, in looking at the map, the multi-commercial is the pink, and throughout town, it looks like, you know, there's a good, and I'm sure it's already all planned out, of course, with the comprehensive plan, but a huge swath that cuts right through the center of it. And then, of course, the side areas, the side partials, the three acres, the five acres, that kind of rest in these areas that are just nestled, I'm just, it's difficult to figure a business there that would be, where people wouldn't just go a little bit farther for the main strip or whatnot. And the one behind houses already, I know there's an artillery, that artillery that's going to go through there, we, we voted on that, but there's houses all around the front of it, and five-acre shopping center, I could maybe see a school, I don't know, it's just hard to visualize businesses in those locations, when there's the big swaths going through.
The other, the other concept, I mean, the whole concept of why that property back there was mixed commercial in the first place is it was requested as such by the property owner, Mr. Adolf Bucko, who owned the land before he passed away, and it went down to, and it went to his, to his family members. But that, it also, when combined with the properties along Cook Road, if someone were to own that, the five acres of Bucko property, along with the properties in front along Cook Road, which are narrower, you'd have to assemble a couple of them, now you have the opportunity to do something like Crossroads Square, you know, the, the shopping center across Cook Road, which would be, you know, a larger-scale, commercial, job-producing area. And that is the logic in why that back property was ever even included as, as, as mixed commercial. Also, in mixed commercial, you could do things like senior retirement homes. That was also something that was possibly envisioned in that area.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Were you wanting to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, because these people have been waiting for time, and it was so well written out that I don't really see having to wait that much longer for it. So I'll, I'll make a motion to deny both rezones by the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie and seconded by Councilman Allen to deny both rezones, which was proposed, the opposed amendment by the, by the Planning Commission. So all those in favor, was there any more discussion before we move on? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Nay.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lavaca. All four, Councilman Lavaca opposed. All right, thank you. So also on the agenda, it was, it was a late material. This is the One Washington Memorandum of, between Washington municipalities. It's an understanding between Washington municipalities. Nikki, is this you? Are we discussing this, or what, what is going on with the late materials here?
Mayor, this was actually on the consent agenda. They had updated the exhibits two days ago, and so I, I put the updated exhibits on late materials, but the MOU itself was approved on the consent agenda.
Perfect, okay, thank you. All right, that is it for tonight. Is there anything for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Next meeting is April 6, and it is a council study session. Thank you.